The regular meeting of Mohammed Seymour Board of Education is called to order. It is seven o'clock P M Tuesday, January twenty first. At this time, I'd like to remind everyone to please sign in and silence their cell phones. I would also like to remind our visitors that in order to facilitate an effective meeting, we ask those who wish to make comments to the board, read the visitor guidelines, which are on the table outside the door, and complete the attached public participation form and bring those to Dr. Lee. Public participation is not, is only allowed during the public participation portion of the meeting. Other than those times, board meetings are not interactive with those. Bannister?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Lamb?
Here.
McComb?
Here.
Rock?
Here.
Severn McMurray?
Here. Stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are excited tonight to welcome our freshman mentoring program at the high school. Benedict is going to start us off, yes?
Just real quick, I'll get the computer set up for them. This is, for those of you, this is our fifteenth year of our freshman mentoring program. So, Mr. Rock, I believe you're alumni of the program, correct?
I am, yeah, it's the early days.
Yeah.
You could, you could get away with a lot more back then.
How early was it? Were you a freshman or were you a mentor?
So, I was actually the last freshman class not to have the freshman mentoring program. I was the first year with my sophomore.
We're wondering that.
I'm going to let the students introduce themselves tonight, but I did want to highlight Mr. Ryan and Mrs. Martin being here tonight, our sponsors of the program, and I believe all fifteen years, correct? Yeah, so they've been in charge of the program for a long time. And when I give our tours to new, new students and new families that come in, I always highlight our freshman mentoring program because I think it's a very unique thing and part of our building. So, excited to have our kids showcase it tonight. So, you guys come on up.
Are you doing slides?
Yeah.
Introduce yourself first.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Levi Avery. I'm one of the juniors here in the freshman mentoring program. And tonight I'm joined with, I'll just start over here.
I'm Olivia Minor, I'm a junior.
I'm Morgan Waysa, I'm a senior.
I'm Olivia Pfeifer, and I'm a senior.
I'm Julia McPherson, I'm a senior.
I'm a trafficante, I'm also senior.
And I'm Melan Colp, and I'm also a senior.
First and foremost, we would like to thank you guys, this is the board, for having us over to share a little bit about the program. And yeah, we are so excited to do that.
So, the heart of freshman mentoring program is building connections and relationships and supporting our freshmen through their entire first year of high school, like in the midst of a busy final season. So, I'd like to share with you a story from a freshman in the midst of their first final season about their senior mentor, Maddie Lockston. Maddie Lockston took me and two other people to the Christmas celebration on Main Street. It was such a fun time hanging out with them, and I never thought I enjoyed, I would enjoy it as much as I did. We took a lot of pictures and we decorated cookies, and we were also able to hear them magical sing. Maddie has such an amazing energy, and she always has a smile no matter what.
I want you guys to think back to your freshman year. And one, did you have any connections with the upperclassmen? Did you, like, run into them at all? And not only did you run into them, did you even establish relationships or connections with them? And our job as a program is to make sure that every freshman can say yes to both of those questions.
So, the way that we do that is across twelve different classrooms, and each classroom has around four to five mentors, and we all manage about twenty to twenty-four freshmen. Now, how this works is on Mondays and Fridays, we have something called academic days where the students can get their homework done and work with the mentors to do so. And then Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, we usually teach a lesson that can be stress management, mental health, or anything from giving back to your community.
So, a big part of this takes place during the summer. We meet, here's a picture of one of our meetings, but we meet over the summer, typically three to four times for a couple of hours, and we start planning our meetings. We talk about how to be good mentors. And we also start learning our freshmen's names over the summer. And then when it comes to grip or freshman orientation later on, then we know our freshmen's names. It's easier to connect with them, and you can start building those connections early on. And that helps kind of have them earn trust towards us and be more open to our lessons and stuff that we have to share with them.
Yeah, and I think, like, we put in so much work, but it's so worth it in the end because really empowering these freshmen are so important. Personally, I believe that every freshman that comes into our school is someone who's worth, like, investing our time and energy into and really working on building relationships with them. I know I have learned a lot from my freshmen. I've talked to people I never thought I would have talked to and just gotten to be really close with some people. And not only am I teaching them lessons, but I'm reciprocating that back to myself, and I just value it a lot.
So, at the beginning of the school year, one of our biggest goals is transitioning those freshmen into high school life, because obviously that's very difficult. So, in doing so, one of the biggest things is the friendships and the relationships that we build in, not only in F and P, but also outside of the classroom. For example, one of our earliest things that we did was a spirit week competition, where each of the classrooms got to decorate the classroom shown here and collaborate outside of the class to see who's bringing in what, what they're going to do, and that allowed us to do so.
We also offered up a survey to our freshmen in which some of them elaborated on some of their favorite moments throughout F and P. And then one of my freshmen said that the most memorable thing that a mentor has done for me was when Olivia Minor got me a present for my birthday, and it had all of the things that I really like in it. I thought it was very thoughtful and nice of her to do that. And one of the reasons why I feel like I have such a deep connection with my freshmen is because my freshman year, I had my own role model. I think there's a picture of us on this slide. Or not. It'll be somewhere, it's okay. It's okay. So, this is my lovely mentor, Callie. And she just, she would do a lot of little things with us, like take us out to lunch. And it's just these small details that helped me build a really foundational relationship with her. And we even have such a deep connection that even though she's off in college and out in the world, we still catch up to this day. And so, as mentors, one of our goals is to give back. So, I had someone that was investing in me, and now I have the opportunity to give that to my freshmen and hopefully make a similar impact in their life.
So, aside from class time, we show up for our freshmen outside of school. So, I am not involved in the marching band, I'm in a lot of other extracurriculars. But during their competition season this past fall, on Saturdays, I would, I drove out to as many competitions as I could. This was their last one, and it was the only one I was able to find both of them at the same time and get a photo with them because they're running around. But they really appreciated me showing, like, coming out for them. And I would yell at them during, while they're performing, which probably they appreciated so much. But they loved seeing me there, especially if their family and friends couldn't make it. It's really important for us to be able to be those friends for them.
And I think something that is super important that we always try to keep in mind is that we never want time spent with our freshmen to feel like it's an obligation. We don't want them to feel like we're putting, we're doing the work to try to get something personal for ourselves. Like, we're not doing this to earn anything, we do it because we really love it. One freshman from Clark F and P said, "Adela Bird always drives me home when I need it and never makes me feel like a burden. I could text her when she's already home, and she will come back to the school and pick me up. She makes me feel like we're actually friends rather than I'm just a job that she has to do."
Like this picture that's up right now. A lot of the times, we will introduce our freshmen to new activities in the school. This is me with one of my freshmen, I'm on sound crew for our drama department. And this particular freshman might never have joined the department or been introduced to that side of the school if I hadn't shown her there. It's really, really important for us to help these freshmen connect with their new environment and with their new community, and in turn, being in the same activities as them helps to strengthen our relationship even further.
Just putting another example to what Emily just told us. One of my freshmen wrote in their mid-year survey. She says, "Both Levi and I are in band, choir, drama, and many other things as well. Levi is a maverick, and I didn't make maths this year. So, he is someone I look up to whenever it comes to things like that. When I was auditioning for I L M E A, he helped me with my skills and sent me recordings on his piano, and that was extremely helpful." And I just like to highlight that, you know, it's really these small things, you know? There's no any sort of huge ceremony or something in order to win their respect and build those connections, and so we're so honored to be able to foster and share those small moments with them.
So, on top of all these really good things, there's obviously challenges that we face too. And one of those biggest challenges that we as mentors have noticed is making the lessons engaging and fun for them in a way that they're going to learn practical life lessons that they're going to use for the rest of their lives. And so, one of the biggest things we do is we focus on making our lessons fun for them, engaging, having deep discussions, and also having interactive parts where they feel like they're learning hands-on and not just sitting and listening to us talk the whole time. And another thing that we do to try to improve halfway through the year is, you've heard some people talk about the survey that we've given, and that's what we call our mid-year survey, and we give them a survey midway through the year, and they answer a couple of different questions. And then we take what they've given us through that survey and try to improve for second semester.
I think that's the last slide. Thank you guys so much for having us here today, we really appreciate it. Does anyone have questions about the program in general, or our experiences, or stories, anything like that?
I don't have any questions, but it was a great presentation, like, super impressive. One thing I kept hearing was that, you know, you're, you're reinvesting in the, the younger ones coming up, and I think that's really cool, like the sense of community that you guys have. I have an eighth grader that's going to be a freshman, my oldest, and I don't know if I'm more nervous about that than she is. But seeing this presentation tonight and your guys' leadership, I think that she's going to be in good hands. So, just thank you for all that you do.
Fifteen years running, and it's no surprise. Commend you all for taking the time and spending the energy on this. You, you have a really hard job. How many, how many mentors are in one classroom right now?
Five.
To how many freshmen?
Twenty-six.
You talk about those personal relationships, and it can be really hard to show up every day on top of your studies, on top of your extracurriculars, to show up and feel like you want to be there, I think. What's your name again, I'm sorry?
Julia.
Julia, you said it best when you were taking a student home one day or whatever you were, you were doing, they said it didn't feel like it was a job. And it could be, I think, really tricky to show up every single day and, and give them the sense that you want to be there and that you're not just checking a box or, or doing something to put it on your college application or, or resume, right? Like, I really get the sense that you guys, you guys want to see improvement. Hats off to C D R and Mrs. Martin as well. Amazing leaders in our schools, especially in the freshman mentoring program. My question is actually for you two specifically. How has the program changed since year one to year fifteen? How is it more impactful? How is it more efficient? What are, what are some highlights that you could share with us?
I think we do a lot more summer prep now than we did then. We, we know that a lot of things have changed just in our culture and society. So, we have a lot more things that we talk about and prepare our mentors for. So, the prep is definitely a lot different.
Greater bandwidth of student needs coming into our, into our building, but that's greater opportunity. These guys are rising up to that, so.
So, another thing too, and then I'll stop. The greatest gift you can give is to somebody is your time. And yeah, I think you, you, you have an opportunity to, to change lives, and it's, it's really easy. I do some mentoring one-on-one. It's really easy when, when you, and I only do it once a week, right? You guys, you guys are doing this every single day. You, you've got more time, you've got more students, but you have more time. And, and you're, you're giving that to them, and just thanks for what you guys are doing, it's awesome. Okay, that's it. We've got, I've got a sophomore, he'll remain nameless, but I'd be annoyed right now if I brought his name up. I also have an eighth grader, so I'm excited for her to be a part of that. And in the Instagram world, it's fake, you all are so real. And I think that that's one of the best parts about, about this. My son hasn't told me any of this. I appreciate all this, and I'm going to ask him some questions in the morning. But I really appreciate it, I'm really impressed with all of you, and I think that's a correlation to the leadership that they have. And this program will serve you well, and the experiences you have with it, because leadership is dealing with people, and if you're dealing with twenty-six freshmen each, we'll commend you for that. It's like herding cats at times. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, this, what you guys are doing speaks a lot about your guys' personality and how successful you're going to be in life. Thank you for doing that, and thank you for stepping up to the plate and doing that. My son's a freshman right now, and I know he really enjoys what, what you've got going on with this. So, thank you all for doing what you do, and thank you guys for doing it as well.
Just a couple of comments, I guess. First of all, we see a lot of presentations over the course of the years. And as far as presentations go, you guys deserve to be commended. You're right up there with the best of what we've seen. Not to take any, any way from anybody else, but you guys did a super job tonight. I guess more importantly, you're doing a super job with the program. And that, that affects other students, and I, I appreciate that. I think Mr. Rock probably would like to come back and go through the program. And maybe we all should, and Dr. Lee should come along too, I don't know. But you're impacting kids' lives, and you're, you're making friends. And one you mentioned that you, I think more than one, you mentioned you still stay in contact with the person who was your freshman mentor. So, that says a lot. So, thank you, thank you, you two, for guiding us in the beginning. And a unique thing that we do, and, and we're proud of it, and we're really proud of you guys.
I'll just kind of wrap it up. First thing, I want to know, you're all juniors and seniors, have you thought about what kind of career you want to pursue? Yes, no?
Oh, you're saying, I actually, I'm going to the University of Kentucky to study community leadership and development. No, and I was just going to say, like, learning from what I've learned, like, by being a mentor really helped me, like, confirm that decision and kind of guide me into that major because, like, I just love building those kinds of relationships and leading and making, like, actual hands-on change instead of just sitting, like, in alternative positions.
So, I was kind of wondering, anybody else?
I want to do surgery, so obviously communication is a big part of that, and a lot of schooling is connecting with people. So, I think that'll be really helpful, learning how to connect with people that I wouldn't typically.
And that leadership too, like that piece of being able, like, I'm just thinking about differences within your freshman mentor classes. And, and this is like a highlight too, kudos to the program, of how you all have such different backgrounds and such different strengths and such different things that you love. And every kid in that room can find somebody to connect with. Like, oh, you like singing, you like sound, you like sports, you like, you know, and you can find those pieces and really connect. And like Olivia, you started us off and said, you know, think about your freshman year and the upperclassmen. I was terrified, like, and like, I was like, oh my gosh, if it's not a freshman, I don't even want to make eye contact, you know? And so, it, I think this speaks to, you know, one of the things we've talked about as a board is strategically, we, we, once, once a bulldog, always a bulldog. And just helping people feel like you walk into this building, you're part of this bulldog community, and we are here to kind of guide you in that. And I'm just, I'm so impressed and so proud of you guys. So, kudos to you. My other question is, what has been the biggest challenge that you think we might be able to help with?
The not thinking.
Like, send us an email.
Oh, okay, okay. I mean, if you've got one, like, right off the bat, or do you guys have one, like, right off the bat?
Definitely willing to meet with the group, it's always a team effort, only this is kind of there. And get back to you on that one. Thank you for that question.
If there's a way to, I mean, maybe, like, do we put another mentor? Just because I know how many more kids are coming in, right? And so, we're going to need more mentors and, and more, more programming and
Want a mentor lounge? I was thinking.
Can we stop?
Paper, maybe, you know?
Memberships coming up.
If we could get parking spots, like, right?
Like, with all the teachers and everything.
If that second row, just, you know, mentor.
I am so sorry I asked.
Why, we probably shouldn't.
You guys did great, and, and Max is exactly right. I loved how you guys took, took turns and fed off each other and how your pictures match exactly what you were talking about. So, way to go on the communication and on the leadership, and we're just really, and proud of you. So, thank you for giving a part of your night and coming and hanging out with us, you guys did great.
Thank you for your time. Yes.
You do not have to stay, you are welcome to stay because, you know, maybe one day you'll be sitting on one of these seats, but
There's a clear path to sitting on a board of education.
Board of Education member. Thank you, guys. All right, item five is approval of agenda. And you have all had a chance to look at the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as it is presented? Is that second? Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, this is a voice vote, so all those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye. All those opposed? Okay, agenda is approved. The consent agenda items include minutes for the December sixteenth open and closed session meetings, bills as presented, treasurer's report is presented, personnel changes as presented, and overnight slash out-of-state trips. Does anybody want anything removed for individual discussion? Okay, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, that's, any discussion?
Bannister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severn McMurray?
Yes. Okay, so that passes. Donations, Dr. Lee?
Yeah, several donations this month again. And the first one was a very generous donation from Dr. Paul Santi, Paul and Brooke Santi, for an amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Weight room improvements, he works often with, with Coach Atkins as well as with Jim Resley. And they create a list of items that they need, and, and then he comes in and meets with me generally every December, so we're appreciative of that. Arkansas Utility Contractors donated five hundred dollars to the Boys Wrestling Activity Fund. Mohammed Town and Country Women's Club donated five hundred and fifty dollars to Mom's Pantry and the Social Work Activity Fund. Brian Hibbs donated two thousand dollars to Mom's Pantry as well as two thousand dollars to the Give Me Five Food Program. We have an anonymous donation to Mom's Pantry of three thousand dollars. And Ron and Margaret White with a donation of a thousand dollars to Mom's Pantry as well. So, total for this month is twenty-four thousand, fifty dollars.
Thank you. Superintendent recommends the approval of the donations as presented, do I have that motion? Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you to everyone.
Huge thank you.
As always.
Santi does that, Solomon does that almost, I think, not almost, but every year he does. I don't know if it's always fifteen thousand, but it's always, it's always a healthy amount.
It's been at least ten.
Yeah, it's been at least ten. And then, you know, the other fourteen thousand, about thirteen thousand of that was to the various food programs. Very generous contributions there, it's just amazing what our community continues to do.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Bannister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severn McMurray?
Yes, donations are approved. Moving on to communications, I don't, anything T L? M S C A? Foundation?
Yeah, just a quick update. The Foundation Bash will be Friday, April fourth this year, and it's going to be at the city center. And as I mentioned last time, we will have a live band this year playing cover songs. Really looking forward to that. It's going to be an event you don't want to miss, so mark your calendars for April fourth. And actually, tickets just went live today. You can get an early bird price on your tickets. So, you can go to the Mohammed Seymour Foundation Facebook page, and there's a link for tickets there.
Very cool, thank you. I don't see any visitor forms. Or communication? If you don't have any reports, I can chime in and give a shout out.
I have nothing to say.
Okay, I was just going to say that I, I appreciate, I was thinking a lot about e-learning, and I appreciate Dr. Bagby and our teachers and the robust e-learning plan that they put together. And I know that it is a very hard seat to sit in when you are the one who has to make that decision. And I had some very grumpy children this morning when I told them that they had to go to school.
Two out of thirty-four hundred. Y'all was excited.
I had three, so.
But the conversation I had with my, my seventh grader is the same conversation I've had. I had the same conversation with my student teacher today, and that is, you know, for a lot of kids, school is the safest place for them to be. It has been a long weekend. We have kids who have not had food at home over the weekend. They may not be in a, in a, in a situation where they're getting the support they need at home. For our kids that do have that at home, that's amazing and that's wonderful. But I, if it's safe for them to be at school, I want them to be at school. So, that's one thing that I, I appreciate about you, Dr. Lee, that you don't often back down from pressure, so thank you for that. All my kids hold on to hope, maybe we'll get like a twelve, you know, thirteen-inch snowstorm one day, and you'll have to call it, the buses won't get through the roads. So, thank you, thank you for, for every score. And thank you also for hearing the comments from different people, you know? Because I know that there are people on both sides, and they said, here's how I feel, and here's how I feel, and, and you're always open to that, so I appreciate that about you. Okay. Initial update. It was in the packet. Notice anything?
Everything is running. Consistent, right around that fifty percent mark for the year that we're at. For the year, we're at a hundred and twenty days cash. So, that's good at this time of year. It will slightly go down until we start getting our property taxes for the next year, for two thousand twenty-four. If anybody has any questions about the red flag report or the
I, I did notice the days of cash on, on the red flag, and that's the best we've been in a long, long time. Still nowhere near what the state wants us to have.
It's still great.
But for us, it's really good, so.
Good job. Other questions? Thanks, Heather. Mrs. Moorethrup, do you have anything that you need to point out for us?
I don't, just highlighting some of the micro businesses that our students run here in the district. And it's a really cool thing because every building where those programs are being run is, they're very welcoming. And, you know, everybody loves coffee, so. It's really, it's a really beneficial kind of practice for our students.
I'd just like to commend you for the programs that you guys put on. Every time I see these updates or, or we have these kids in here from the various programs, like, it just warms my heart. They're so well-supported, and they have so many opportunities. I think you're doing a really great job with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Credit goes to the staff that, you know, they're the boots-on-the-ground people every day, and they're their ideas and, and they're their support.
Please pass along our, our thanks.
Where do I send a picture of our dog when she got her little? Like, she was like in heaven. Do I do it digital, or do I do like a hard copy one?
You can send it digitally to Tracy Patterson, she'll share it with, she'll share it with our students out there, and they get a big kick out of it.
Those are some pretty competitive prices, Christine, I'm wondering. How, how can I get in front of these kids?
We've not talked about a delivery service yet. You know, I've got a couple of students who are very interested in driving, we're having discussions about those kinds of things. We might set up a drive-through, that might be our
That works.
That would be cute.
Yeah, it would. Not on a day like today.
Very cool. Any other questions for Christine? Thank you, Christine. Uh, Dr. Bagby?
Just an update on eighth, ninth grade course registration, kind of some of those next steps there. And then some of the professional development that we kicked off the January third Institute Day with. If there's any questions, ready to ask a wedding.
I was so excited because I happened, somebody put something on Facebook, you know, where the, you know, everything goes to. Become an issue. But somebody put something about kindergarten play in kindergarten and I'm like, yeah, absolutely. Especially when we're thinking about like the ageiest generation, the most ageiest generation and getting kids away from screens and getting kids hands on play and role playing and communicating. And then when I saw this, I was like, okay, we we are on the right track. So kudos and thank you. And this is really exciting.
They had a great day and we're going to continue following up with that this year and probably into next year. But a really great day with the kindergarten and pre K team together.
Other questions for Bagby? Before we move on to Kenny, I did also want to give a shout out to the principals that I really liked all their reports.
Intendant? I walked into the baseball game and I was like.
Yes. I just love the fact that like we can see data that that they're discussing and that like the strategic planning process has been so helpful and like to say like this is where we're heading. This is what our goal is. Here's here we are. Here's where we are in meeting that goal. Like I'm just I'm good to the principals. Uh, actually.
Just a highlight of some of the the policies that we notify of staff of prior to every school year. Dr. Bagby has worked with our our global compliance network training too, to where we have a sign off on on several of these now as well this year. As we move into the twenty five, twenty six school year, I'll meet with assistant principals to make sure that we're utilizing our school handbooks and staying in alignment with our Board of Education Policy Manual. And then normally we say that typically the five essentials will be administered soon. And we've all been to meetings in the last month and we've all heard nothing about five essentials. So more to come if if we hear anything with regard to that.
Thank you. We don't do five essentials. Is there a plan to get?
Well, we want our points.
I know. Listen, I I'm all in on those points. Yes, I get that. I get that.
There are some other options that are out there that I have seen, but they're all cost money. So we'll see what happens.
Um, okay. Any question? Yes. Any questions for that? All right, item one under unfinished business is superintendent evaluation process. So go ahead.
After the meeting in December, I sent out a couple of different tools. And then also I've got, in the meantime, I've received another one. That's a canned program called SuperVal that I can send out tomorrow morning for you for the board of referees as well.
So one of the things, when Kenny and I looked at this SuperVal option, it rang about to me that I had gone to a session about it early on about superintendent evaluation at the school board conference. And I remember looking at that tool and thinking, this is this lines up kind of. It it felt very similar to what we were talking about. So I kind of feel like you guys will be will kind of lean toward this as far as an evaluation process. I really liked the way it was presented. Didn't seem too burdensome. So once you send that out.
Yep, send it out.
But. I do feel like we need to kind of like. Is if we're not renewing some contration. I wait. It's a joke. You're fine. Any questions on that? Okay, wonderful. Policy for home thirty revenue and investments update.
Yes, Heather continues to work with various institutions. Do you have an update this month?
Yes, currently our rate is the best rate so far. Everybody else is running around four. If we want to look in the future, which, you know, that's the thing is the four point nine five three is not guaranteed forever. We don't have a contract for that amount. So I mean, that is something that could fluctuate with the market. We have tried to inquire with UC to see if that is going to continue or how long he can see people off on that. Because I know they did want to take our rate down to four point five versus the four point nine five three. But, you know, something we can look at if we wanted to go into long term, if we think it's going to go below the four eventually, you know, then we can. I think that it would be okay to do the longer term or the laddered CDs, you know, or different things. But right now, if we're just looking at the short term, then so far of everything I received and everything, then, you know, we're at a higher rate at that point. And some people, you know, are willing to go a little bit more if we were to transfer all of our business over. So which would be a whole nother discussion.
I'm all for that. But, you know, it's what are the other costs associated with it? We can get at a higher rate, but there's other costs or it's more difficult to do business with them. I mean, that none of that doesn't make sense. The only thing I would tell you on a rate, there still is that inversion. So I don't, you know, your four point nine is phenomenal. But if we could get it higher, that that'd be great. I just don't. You may have to go into a intermediate term certificate and get a less rate. But it's hard to say right now. There's a lot of data.
I just really appreciate you guys. Any other questions for Heather? Vision twenty thirty, Dr. Lee.
Yes, I mentioned last month that several of the education based organizations in the state have worked together to create a vision twenty thirty as a spin off of vision twenty twenty that was implemented that that brought forth a lot of things, but mainly the evidence based funding, which we've been very has benefited us very, very well.
Especially compared to the old program.
Yes, yes. So so, yeah, Heather and I can, you know, two thousand and ten war stories about GSA and all of that. Piece of that. So with regard to to this, it really will focus and and there'll be subgroups and and it'll be superintendents and and business officials groups that will will focus on ways to pass legislation that will keep schools safe, allow us to attract and retain high quality teachers, enhance post secondary success, and then effectively measuring what's working in a more timely manner. For one, one thing that's already been thrown out there that our our state superintendent has come to us with is that we've really been using the same management system at the state level for as as long as I can remember. So it's time to revamp that. And that's a result of feedback from from people who have have boots on the ground. The the reason that these these advocacy groups want local boards to approve it is that when we are as as a group trying to pass legislation, it certainly helps in Springfield when when we can say how many different towns have supported these initiatives that are going through. So it is it is the the more school districts in in each district that that approve it of this resolution that we have before you tonight, the more power we have as we try to to make additional changes, really focused on these four things in Springfield.
One of the things that I appreciated about it is as an educator, it's frustrating when you are told you need to do X, Y, Z because some legislator thought it was a good idea. But without ever having been in a classroom or been in a school building, it doesn't make sense or it costs a whole lot of money that they're not going to fund. So one of the things I appreciated about this is that it is an opportunity for educators to weigh in on kind of what the impact would be on schools, especially in these areas that we know needs. These are these are things that are happening. So I'm I'm glad that you brought it to us. Other questions? Comments? The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the vision twenty thirty resolution as presented. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Thank you. And whether discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Anister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Leven, McMurray.
Yes, okay, that is approved. Conduct public hearing concerning the intent of the Board of Education to sell four point eight million dollar school fire prevention and safety bonds. Conduct.
We get specific language from. Yes, does it make sense to me? No, but you have to send the agenda off to them to get approved.
I trust you. Uh, all right. So tell us what we're talking about, Heather.
Yes. We are required to have a final hearing, which is a bond issue notification act hearing. This just gives the public an opportunity to talk or ask questions about our bond issuance. So it's something that we have to publicize and let everybody know that we are discussing these, which these are health, life, safety bonds. So we do not have to have a petition period, but we still have to have this hearing just to give people an opportunity.
I just wanted to point out that Chapman in the paper listed me as Secretary of the Board of Education, which is outdated. I don't know that that makes any difference. I just wanted to call that out.
Sarah's changing that for the signature purposes.
Thank you, sir.
I have it updated.
We don't want any technicalities here.
Questions for Heather or Heather?
And where are the terms? Have we gotten that far yet?
For the what? For the?
The bonds.
For the bonds. We won't know the terms right now. Right now, we are. Tomorrow, they will submit the bid package to everyone, to the potential buyers, which I gave contact information for all the buyers within Mohammed as well, just so that they have an opportunity to purchase them locally. But once that happens, then on December or on February twelfth, we'll actually receive the bids. So and be able to find out what our actual rate will be.
Chapman have a forecasted rate. I know sometimes they.
It's a good idea.
Right now, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know what it'll be. I mean, it just depends on the different institutions. I mean, these are going to be two year bonds. So, yes, and the reason they're two years because, you know, we're not asking for a large amount of money. It's up to four point eight million, which, you know, we can basically is the ones that you had approved before, the ones that are up tonight, plus the L T roof and the rest of the controls that were not paid for by the S R grant. So it's about, it comes to a little under four point eight. We will find out soon enough, you know, what the what the rate would be. But the two year term is just hopefully in two thousand twenty six, you know, we'll be able to pass referendum to complete all work and have everything opened up. We can use that bond capacity as well.
That's the full repayment period, two years fully amortized, not just the refund.
That was just a question.
Consider it conduct.
It is conduct. I was like, is it conduct or conduct? Conduction.
That's science.
Okay. Item two, approval of health, life, safety amendments. Also, Heather.
These are the two I was just talking about. These are just two more. They are actually already put in the health, life, safety system by union. So everything is done. I just have to approve them to move them on. But this is part of the four point eight million. The exterior soccer bleachers for thirty one thousand and the football visitor bleachers and east band bleachers for a hundred and thirty.
Are the soccer bleachers going to be portable, movable?
Are they movable?
Yeah.
I've talked to him about about exploring portables for what what they have at soccer, but then also would it make more sense to buy larger portables for the football over on the other side and pour a pad of concrete and put those on as well. So he's looking, he's looking.
Maybe you'd have some flexibility if things were to change with the certain side or.
Yeah, similar to what we have at Fieldhouse where we could.
Are they portable now, Nathan, at the junior high, the soccer ones?
And they're smaller, but affordable. I think they're they've been there a long time.
Anytime when they're useful.
Uh, other questions? Okay, superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the health, life, safety amendments as presented. Do I have a motion for that?
Moved.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Anister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Leven, McMurray.
Yes, so that passes. Item three is consideration and possible approval of a contract with B L D D Architects for services rendered related to the H L S amendments.
Yes, so you just approved the, as as Heather mentioned, the exterior soccer bleachers as well as the football visitor bleachers and the east band bleachers. Last month, the the projects that were approved were the the high school fire alarm, junior high fire alarm, Lincoln Trail Fire Alarm, high school bleachers, Lincoln Trail Controls. And then previously an L T E roof and then going back and paying for the controls is the basically the the meat and potatoes of of that bond. You'll remember that the controls is a reimbursement. So that's about eight hundred thousand dollars with the reimbursement. So then we're looking at three point nine million dollars of health, life, safety work. So in order to have architectural services and and stamps on all of that, then this contract covers that three point nine.
All that work.
Yeah, all all of that work in there. So we've included that contract with that. And that Ms. Smith is is verified the the cost with that. And it does come out to about three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars.
Yeah, not really so much about the B L D D part of it. You mentioned east band bleachers. I'm confused. Currently, does it stand at the west end? So are we moving them to the other end?
I think that's probably a typo when when Damian put that in there.
Okay. Those aren't fixed either.
No, those are those are movable. And I'm sure what we're buying would be Okay, just curious about that. So moving those to the other end, that, I mean, I don't really care. But then use that other end for other stuff and it's all grass on there. There's nothing to put on it. Okay. All right. Back to the B L D D part of this. I think it's great that we have architectural supervision and we have architectural stamps on everything. So it's all all you one official. So I would and be supportive of this.
Other ideas, thoughts, questions?
I don't want to sit here going east and west, east and west for the last ten minutes. I'm glad to know.
I thought the, I don't know, Heather, if this is like the form that you have to submit or that's what Damian put together as far as the scope of the work. And that was pretty helpful from my perspective to see the dates that some of these systems were originally installed and how far back those go to the nineteen fifties and sixties. And just the need for that to to update these buildings. My hope is also with it bringing up to code and and making these places more safe, also maybe some cost savings on efficiency. So I just appreciate all the detail that went in.
I would like to think out the control systems for the season. I would hope.
Well, and I think if you look at, I mean, you guys, several of you have had junior high students in your current year recently and and the 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 amount of instruction that Ben disturbed the fire alarm issues that that Nathan and and Dwayne have worked through that replacing that will be.
I think we're all supportive of anything you can do to keep our kids and staff safe and visitors safe.
No comments?
You know, keep visitors safe. We might have a difficult time eventually finding a bonus. A bonus supply.
All right. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the contract with B L D D Architects to perform services. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the contract with BLDD Architects to perform services related to health, life, safety amendments as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second. Oh, boy.
I heard.
All right.
It's also on this side of.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call.
Bannister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severns McMurray.
Yes, okay, that passes. Approval of service agreement with Carl Therapy Services.
Hello, this is a renewal for us with Carl for three years. They have been providing our. Post-employment screenings for some of our student services staff, some of our custodial staff, things like that. Years ago, they came out and kind of observed these jobs and things like that and put together what those screenings could look like. To make sure that we have staff in those positions and are safe to do the work in those positions. So this is a post-employment offer. Type of screening that we do some of our pair with all of our pair pros and our student services and our custodial staff. So they've been great to us. So this is really just a renewal that we're bringing forward tonight. So any questions?
Pretty reasonably priced, too.
And they, especially when it gets down to crunch time, like filling spots when schools, I mean, they get us in. They've done a really, really nice job the past few years. Very happy with that.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the service agreement with Carl Therapy Services as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Any further discussion?
Bannister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severns McMurray.
Yes, that is approved and Dr. Brady is also up here to talk about the calendar.
Yeah, so we have the twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar for you, if you remember.
Thank you for that, like the plan ahead.
So we have, as Mrs. McMurray is mentioning, we, last year, we made sure we got back to having a two-year calendar on cycle. So now we're looking two years out. Would you mind presenting my screen? I'm plugged in, but it's not. Anyway, so thank you. So you have the calendar. You have a couple of views in front of you. This is just the little bit more reader-friendly, one that will publish publicly. If this is approved tonight, we sent this and a couple of options. We worked at the calendar committee, received feedback from staff, our administrative teams. Also thinking about some of the feedback the board presented to us last year. So Mr. Bannister, as you'll, you'll notice, we have the Monday. Off or not off after Easter for this this calendar year. The teachers did want to. That was something he asked about, like, why do we have to have it off? Yeah. So it's not, it's not, we do not have that off this for the twenty-six, twenty-seven with spring break and Easter. It's kind of like last year. It's so close. So the recommendation that the teachers came up with is can we still have that day? But you know, it's a really long haul from how early spring break is and Easter is to the end of the year. So you'll see that Monday has been moved to April twenty-sixth to give a three-day weekend there. And things like that. So you'll see election day is reflected there. Our institute day. Is also two of them at the the beginning of the year, one coming back. And then the other one around in February, around President's Day. So that's where those are located. And then we have our early dismissal. So everything else is pretty standard. Spring break follows U of I's, making sure we're staying consistent with that. And then we're done before Memorial Day, the two weeks off at winter break, things like that. So everything else is pretty standard on there.
I'm surprised that the teacher, we had heard so much about having a fall break and that we put those days in for Thanksgiving.
Yeah, this coming year, yep.
That that isn't included in this one.
And that was one of the other options and the staff voted sixty-five point six percent for this one over the other one. There's a few differences besides that between these, this, the one that they got to vote.
That's a big difference with the other one is.
I mean, I will support whatever the, the majority of the teachers want. Absolutely.
That was in, they had that option to vote, things like that, but we did need to balance first semester and second semester with some of those quarter and semester-long classes. And so we did have to mess around. So there was some differences with winter break and stuff like that in there, so.
I also love how the teacher institute, institute days are spread out.
Like during the year, you can actually use them to like do something because that last day you're like fried.
It's very helpful.
I'm not sure if this is a question for you or for Mr. Benedict. Do we have graduation date set for this yet?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Off the top of my head, I think we cycled back. I think we were in the two-year cycle like this year's in early May ninth. Calendar rolled on us and I think we have one every year of that. Then we go back through later weekend, I think. I remember right. How about the top line? Just curious.
Great question. We'll probably roll with that calendar, kind of like graduation does. If you see August first is on that Saturday, that will roll till that Sunday. So that will cause some changes looking at that twenty-seven, twenty-eight calendar and things like that. That that really has caused us is that one has gone to the right on the calendar. Has caused us to appear to start earlier and earlier every year. So as that one cycles back, we will have a little bit of a refresh there with our start dates. Yeah.
August will seem awfully.
Yeah, and August, yeah, for kiddos. Yes, absolutely. And August tenth for teachers. So we had a lot of discussion about that of that seeming earlier and earlier. But if we have no emergency days, we are done May twenty-first, so a week before Memorial Day as well. So give and take, right?
So that allows you to have more days in for semester.
Correct. Yep.
Make it a little more balanced.
Absolutely. I'm sorry.
Answers were almost balanced.
Yeah, I think there was two days, there was two days difference.
Which I appreciate if that's.
Absolutely.
That's a little tricky.
Is there anything else we traded off to get the schedule over the other schedule other than a fall break?
Fall break, the winter schedule being a little different. The other one, there was an institute day before election day in this. That was just kind of weird, I think, for in general. So that was one of the other trade-offs. Other than that, that's it.
Monday after Easter for Nathan Mills's birthday.
Oh, yes.
Well, is that why?
We're not taking off Dr. Lee's birthday. So we only are celebrating Mr. Mills and not Dr. Lee, so.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Agby? Any Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year as presented. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Salute.
Thank you. And a second? Any discussion? I feel like. Now you need to tell us what you're worried about.
So it's correct on one of our other ones, but there's.
Six, the thirty-first is a Wednesday. If you look at. First, it shows on a Friday.
It's correct on the the more official. It just hasn't.
Yeah, December thirty.
Yeah, no, it's correct on.
If nothing else, this group.
It's correct on this one, which is the one we did the math on. So we'll fix it on the more public facing. It's all good. It's all good. It's correct on the one where we did the math, which is all the better. So we'll correct that on the fancier one. More public-facing one. Good catch.
So on the staff vote, it was like almost two to one for this calendar over the other. I'm just curious, any idea what percentage voted? Did almost everybody vote or not?
A little over half the staff, I mean, almost two-thirds of the staff, because we had two hundred and.
Selected this by a two-thirds margin. Fifty-three responses.
About four hundred staff, so overall. It's really good. It's more than that voted last year as well. So that's, that's awesome.
I know that I'd vote. Maybe I would.
You would vote?
No, it was really great. Fantastic, so.
I guess I would if I, if I'm really passionate about.
We have a motion in a second. After that question. Any other question? Okay, let's do a roll call then the calendar.
Bannister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severns McMurray.
Yes, so that is approved and thank you again for being that so far out. Let's talk about it in our governmental agreement with ISB.
Yeah, so this allows us, this is up for renewal. This allows us to continue hosting current visiting international teachers. Through the Visiting International Teacher Program or to if we wanted to apply for more visiting international teachers. We currently have two visiting international teachers, one at the junior high and one at the high school. So this, we, we do have to get this signed to be able to continue that. The intergovernmental agreement with ISB is just up and it's time for the renewal. So I put some of the the changes or the differences, a lot of them are formalities or some very simplistic language or who's responsible for what. In there, we've had great success with our two visiting international teachers from Spain. And there's potentially some openings that we may want to apply for some more this year. So we would like to continue this partnership. It's been a great partnership. ISB really helps support with a lot of the visa work and things like that. And anyway, we've had two fabulous visiting international teachers. So we would like to continue this program if, if you would approve.
You know, I just want to compliment our staff. We were involved in this, I think, almost from a moment that was awful. And we've had good success with it. And I don't know how I've gotten these conversations, but in the last few months, I've been in conversations with people in a couple of different schools. They said, hey, we just heard about this internationally and we're gonna, and we just got in, I think, we've had international teachers for. A few years now, and you guys are just now figuring this out, so. Good job to our staff, I think, for looking for creative solutions as they became available.
Absolutely. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the intergovernmental agreement by and between the Illinois State Board of Education and the Mohammed Seymour Community Unit, School District Number Three, as presented.
Second.
Further discussion? Let's do a roll call.
Bannister?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severns McMurray.
Yes, all right, that is approved. And our final item. Authorized C S B O, oh, authorized C S B O to begin your twenty-six tentative budget.
Just an annual thing as we continue to to move towards next year. Already probably been started, but just formally authorize Heather to begin working on our fiscal year twenty-six. It should be fall twenty-five, spring twenty-six fiscal year budget, tentative budget. That will work for you.
Right, questions on that?
You've already maybe started a little bit? You need to scratch that. Start over again when we officially.
Heather do her job. Okay, Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve to authorize Heather Smith to begin preparation of the fiscal year twenty-six tentative budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Nice. Further discussion?
Joking aside, you are always very efficient and very thorough and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Bannister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severns McMurray.
Yes, so you may start doing your gap, Heather. That is approved. Close session tonight is necessary for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance. Or dismissal of specific employees and safety and security procedures. Is there a motion to approve going to close session for them? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. You need a roll call vote to go into closed session at this time.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severns McMurray.
Yes, okay, we will go into closed session after a quick recess to. Come for a break, sorry. We do not anticipate any business once we come out of closed session, so we will turn off YouTube and.